Okay, everybody, welcome. This is the first joint, well, I guess it's the first joint meeting between the city and the POA. Welcome all. It's the 26th, and it's 1800 hours, or for those who don't know military time, 6:00 PM. So, welcome.
And I'd like to call our meeting to order at 18, and it's still 1800? Yes. And welcome, everyone here. Thank you for coming. We're glad for the turnout.
Okay, and I'd also like to make an announcement. I see Supervisor District One, Mr. Jeffries is here tonight, so, welcome. Thank you. And with that, Nancy, would you please do the invocation for us, please? Nancy?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity for this historic meeting. This is the first of one that many people for many, many years have tried to put together, and now we're finally here. We thank you for your purpose, to work together as best we can to make our community a better place, to open the lines of communication, and to provide an opportunity for everyone to see our representatives at work. Thank you, Lord, for this beautiful place in which we live. We ought to be giving thanks every moment of every day, but especially now. We thank you for all the water that we have in our beautiful lake, and we thank you for all those who work for the good of this beautiful city. Amen.
And I've asked Steve Liebering to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's all pledge our allegiance to our great flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bonner.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Green.
Here.
Absent at this time is Mayor Protem Aaroncrans and Councilmember Castillo.
Armani, would you please call a roll?
Yes, sir. Director Behringham.
Here.
Director Walti.
Here.
Director Nathan.
Here.
Director Hoggan.
Here.
President Harris.
Here.
Thy present, quorum.
Okay, approval of the agenda for the council, please. All say favor, in favor of?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Ceremonial manners, guys. We got a, we actually have a list here we're following. Can you tell how organized we are? We have some certificates we want to give out tonight to some of our community folks that have done very well. One is, is Spencer in the crowd by any chance? Spencer, come on up.
Alright.
Alright.
Let's go over here, Spence. Okay. I had the privilege last month of going to Spencer's Student of the Month. He was recognized as a student for the Elsinore School District. Spencer was not only recognized as one of the students from the high school here, there's actually four schools represented. He has a very high academic pursuit for his education. He's now very high in regards amongst his teachers, his peers, and his classmates. So Spencer, would you like to say something to the crowd? I just wanted to say thank you to the city for recognizing me. I really appreciate it. It's really nice to be recognized, like, by the place I live in. Thanks for my parents, like, supporting me and everything, and, yeah, it's been really great to win Student of the Month and everything. Thanks.
Good job.
Good job, Spencer.
Good job.
Actually, it's very inspiring to be the Student of the Month, to see our future leaders and the pathways that they're taking to hopefully one day come back and help us move forward in our communities. For tonight, right now, to, is anyone from the urban area? Perfect restaurant, please come forward. Welcome addition to our community. We want to recognize you because you guys have been recognized by the Inland Empire magazine, which puts out through all the Inland Empire, which is Riverside, San Bernardino, all the different activities that go on in, into the county, but also the eateries that are in the county, and they recognize them based on, yours happens to be the best casual eatery. So, we want to congratulate you, and congratulations. Thank you, guys. Would you like to say something?
Well, I guess I just wanted to thank the whole community for their support. I mean, we see a lot of faces that come into the restaurants that are in the crowd, and we just, I mean, we can't make it without everyone's support, and we like being, we love being part of the community, and it doesn't help that we live in Elsinore.
Yay! Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you for asking. I'd like to take a moment to thank our distinguished staff, one of our distinguished staff members, Ron Carson. Would you mind a second, Ron? I have to pay, I have to pay him a little straight there. Ron has correctly decided to retire after 35 years of service. I'm thinking about that 35 years. He has been an accountable and reliable employee for all of his years of service. Ron is what you would call a hump. Everyone can always expect a warm smile and greeting when they see him. Ron is courteous, respectful, and personable. He continues to come to work with a pleasant attitude towards his coworkers and others. He has worked well at all of our facilities and truly drives the pool where he has been certified as an acquired facility operator for many years, and he is personally responsible for working almost a full time. Another highlight for us is Ron loves playing tennis. He has been instrumental in saving the cost of maintenance needs at the courts and ensuring inventory gets replaced or repaired when necessary. He truly cares about this community, and brings his ideas on any notice, maintenance issues, to management's attention on a regular basis. He has seen many changes within the community and the POA, and has endured through many of them with a great attitude. He remains to be consistent and dependable as an irreplaceable asset to this association. I'd now like to bring Ron up, please. In recognition of 35 years of loyal and diligent service, to bless our sincere solidarity, my best wishes for a happy retirement. Now, I'd like to take a moment to thank all of our board members. Thank you, guys. We appreciate all of our hard work and leadership. All of the men you see up here today have dedicated campus hours and hard work with very little thanks and almost no pay, except the occasional perk of cookies. It really is a thank you, and they take a lot of heat for very, very little reward. We try to feed them, and that's pretty much all I get. Today, we'd like to give a, oh, I'm sorry. We as staff wish to show our sincere appreciation for you all, and have successfully made several improvements in our community. To all of you, I say thank you again. Today, we'd like to give a special thanks to our Board President, Mike Harris. Mike, you want to come up? Since 2016, Mike has volunteered more than 1,600 hours of service in the Canyon Lake community through participation of ACC Committee as an ACC Committee member, Board Director, and Board President. I don't know if you realize what ACC entails, but it's all day, every Thursday, just about 52 weeks a year, which is an unbelievable commitment. It's the hardest work the committee have. Mike is there without fail, and it's truly mind-boggling that he would continue to do that, and serve on board, and serve as Board President, and the spokesperson for the DOPHRC, and many other people in the community. So, I wanted to let everyone know just what commitment this guy has made. This amounts to about 1,136 hours on Architectural Committee from July 2016 to now. That's 142 weeks, about every Thursday. 409 hours of board meetings from 2007 to now. Total of over 1,545 hours, not including meeting with me once a week for an hour, check signings, workshops, traffic studies, community events, community walks, et cetera. We see Mike almost daily, except a few days. He has been a excellent leader, and he very supportive of the staff. He's always at our back as employees, and when we establish a relationship like that, or, like I said about the whole board, he has our back, and that means a lot of people who work here, they defend us and go to battle for us, and we've had a great relationship with Mike, who we've been enjoying working with. Very supportive of the staff. Please allow me to present Mike Harris, to open his appreciation, our appreciation for your outstanding contributions to the Canyon Lake community, and for going above and beyond eligibility. We thank you for your infectious enthusiasm and outstanding dedication to campus hours of service, and it's always been a smile. So, thank you, Mike. Do you want to say anything? Yeah, I'll do. Okay. John Stelzner. You push me. I'm ACC. You know, I joined that because I was going to change the world. I just liked getting better than they are. I was going to. Could you take the microphone? The people on TV are saying they don't hear anything, everything too. They hear all that. Yeah. Right. Probably need it, Jack.
I just wanted to thank John Stelzner. He, he's the one that really pushed me to learn the rules and regulations here. I thought I knew, you know. I came from an HOA to a POA, and I knew, well, there are certain things you can't do, but everything else is free. Let's go. I received letters in the mail that told me I was wrong, and so, I joined the committee. I was going to change the world, and I didn't do it. Yeah. Everyone on the committee has joined with that reason. Also, I want to thank the board. You know, this isn't a one-man team. It's these four other gentlemen that we work together to accomplish what we're doing. It's not just me. It's, starting with Dale, Jim, Tom, and Phil. They all deserve this. In fact, I'll photocopy and write their name in. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you read the public comment statement, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Any person wishing to address the City Council and Board of Directors on any matter on this agenda is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the City Clerk prior to an individual being heard by the City Council and Board of Directors. The City Council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person.
Okay, thank you.
We'll start with Steve, is it Liebering?
Thank you, guys, for having this meeting. I'm really happy to see this occur. I'm Steve Liebering, and I'm speaking here tonight as a citizen of the community regarding the traffic issues entering our gates. I've been involved in the past committee discussions with POA staff and gate procedures, and it's clear to me that actions on the gates are interconnected with the management of the traffic that's approaching the gates, so both these discussions are critical. It's my desire that you will make it a priority to discuss your next joint meeting, and we'll appoint maybe a subcommittee in the interim to start exploring options to improve the traffic management approaching our gates. For those that aren't aware of my background, I'm a licensed traffic engineer with over 46 years of experience, and I currently consult for several Southern California cities. My family's lived here full-time for the last 36 years, and so, during that time, I've been able to observe the activity at our gates during the course of normal daily activity as well as during special events, and I believe we need to make it a priority now to enhance our gate operations and procedures, and help streamline the processing of residents and guests through Canyon Lake. With that being said, the examination of the gate operations alone would not be sufficient because the traffic patterns approaching our gates can overwhelm the gate capacity, and that results in stacking backups that are causing real safety issues on city streets. So this is why the city and the POA need to work together to solve this issue jointly, and I believe there's no better time than to start with this joint meeting. Key issues that still regularly occur, as we all know, are lines at the main gate during peak periods can back up onto Railroad Canyon Road and block that intersection, or stop vehicles out on Railroad Canyon Road trying to enter the left turn pocket in a high-speed travel lane. And despite having our own dedicated lane, residents even are sometimes delayed getting back in during holidays. Even the school dismissal during the midday of the, of the week is a challenge getting back into our community, and the lines at the north gate can sometimes stretch over a mile long during special events and holidays. I believe that the signals can be re-timed for special events and help with other peak hour flow, and I believe that we can increase our effectiveness of our procedures that are being deployed, with some traffic flow changes on the roads that are approaching these gates. So, my recommendation is that you form a subcommittee to look in depth into these issues, and to come up with alternatives, cost estimates, and proposed solutions that will have our future in mind. And by looking at those issues, procedural adjustments, policy changes, and some technology enhancements, we might also be able to reduce the need for some of the more costly or physical improvements, such as handling safety, storage of vehicles safely. There are many talented people and community members in our group with experience to draw from, so I hope that we can work together to make this happen. Thank you.
Next, we have Nancy Horton.
Thank you. Just for the sake of the audience, I just want to bring it to everybody's attention that on my right-hand side, we have a government agency, government organization, and on my left, we have a non-government organization, and that's important for some things that have to be done within our city. This meeting is historic and a great way to get the POA and the city of Canyon Lake on the same page. Last year, the total maximum daily load task force decided not to monitor Canyon Lake for harmful algae blooms. The cities that make up the TMDL did not want to pay for the tests because they see that it benefits mostly Canyon Lake's recreation. EVMWD came up with a plan for the Water District, the city, and the POA to share the costs. Unfortunately, the RFP produced a company that would charge way too much money for this service. The test should be done when the temperatures are high, the water is warm, and biomass show up in the lake. At risk are the beaches where swimmers may encounter these biomass. Three HABs are often present in Canyon Lake. Antitoxin A, which is harmful to dogs, cylindrospermopsin, and microcystins, which may cause internal, intestinal illnesses. None have caused death in humans, but they may be particularly dangerous for people and children who have compromised immune systems. The POA and EVMWD were determined to fund testing if it was affordable. It could be affordable with local companies who've tested before and who've worked for the TMDL before. The city, however, decided not to participate. I heard reasons such as liability, unknown costs, et cetera. Another swimming season will be here in three months. The same conditions prevail: warm air, warm water, and shallow areas such as our beaches. The city should engage in this partnership for the health, welfare, and public good of its citizens. The city is the only entity that can represent us, the people, on the TMDL or the Lake Elsinore San Jacinto watershed authority, the other age, and other water agencies, because the city is our only government organization that represents us. The POA is a non-government organization and cannot join these joint powers authorities at all. So I urge the POA and the city to engage with EVMWD, to find a company that will test at a regional, reasonable cost, and to pay for a regular schedule of tests. The public must be made aware of the risks. Thank you.
Lastly, we have Jack Wamsley.
I don't have a long speech. It's just a pleasure, gentlemen, to see you all together. You know, I've been in this community for over 30 years, and I've worked on a few projects. And it really creates a problem when we have one group, maybe has a personality problem with the other group, and so on, and we've got to stop that, and we've got to work together. And you guys, I think, understand that. I think you've done a pretty good job, and I think we need to improve, and this is one of the best improvements, I think, that you're doing. You guys have got to work together on every project that we happen to be in trouble with, I'll say. I'll mention one of the trouble things, and one of the things that we've got to work on is our roads. The, we talked, last meeting, I talked about the funds for our roads, and our roads are the, people don't understand, a lot of them don't understand, it's the most expensive thing that we have in our community. It's the biggest asset we have is our roads, and that was drilled into me when we were in bankruptcy about 30 years ago by the federal judge, and he said, "Jack, you don't have anything set aside for that. You need to set something aside." And so, he said, "I'm not going to let you out of bankruptcy until you do that." And so, fine, tell me how much, and so on, and we set it up, and it was mandatory, I think, as I remember, three years, it could have been more, but anyway, all of the people in, since then, have continued to put that money aside for our roads. Right now, we're, there are a lot of areas in, that we're really in trouble road-wise. We've got to get on it and get it done. There are cracks, and once, once the road gets into that particular, I'll pick the parking lot at the, at the golf course, some of the cracks are so wide you could lose your wallet in it, and when you get to that point, you can't slurry seal it, you can't extend it, you've got to grind it up and start from scratch, and it costs us twice as much to do that. So these are things that I hope that you'll continue, I know that Eric has worked very hard on putting programs together, and I hope that you'll continue to get that particular project. I think it's important, not only for the POA, but it's important for, for the city too. And thanks again for coming together. I hope it's, you do this maybe once a month, or maybe once every two months, whatever's convenient, but it's important that we definitely got to work together. Thank you.
I have no more cards.
We've kind of split this meeting up, so the first part will be mine, which I'll introduce our, our city council, your city council, our, our community council, I'll call it. And I'll open with Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a little bit about, you know, as, as a councilperson, most of us get the opportunity to sit on some regional boards. The one that I get to sit on is RTA, which is the Riverside Transportation Agency. So anything bus-related is I'm your guy, so I have the knowledge of that, but it's actually very interesting for me as a new director on that committee. The regional support is, is a phenomenal thing when you get to sit next to your colleagues and discuss items that are happening, not only on the regional level throughout the county, but also in their cities, too. This is something that makes it very exciting for us as council people to be able to sit at some of these regional boards and pick the brains of some of our colleagues in other cities like Lake Elsinore and Menifee, and come together and work, so it's, it's very important. The other opportunity that I get is I still serve on the Budget and Finance Committee for the city. So me and the mayor sit on that together, and we look at budget line items, issues of concern, how we're going to fund certain projects, find ways and be creative, and it's very important that, you know, that meeting is taken very seriously because it has to deal with, you know, the finances of our cities, and everyone knows how important that is when you're balancing a budget day in and day out. I do want to say, lastly, I'm so appreciative of this meeting. This means, you know, the world to me to have both bodies come together because we serve you, and that's what we're here for, and we were elected, whether it's the POA or the city, to come together and represent the community, and I think the best way to do that is to do it together. So, that's, that's me in a nutshell, but if you have any questions, I'm always available, and I can't thank you enough, everyone, for showing up and participating in this.
Thank you. Councilman Bonner.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that's come into this meeting today. I think it was a really good idea, and I think it's just the beginning of a process that's just going to grow over time. You know, I, this, on my second term, I got two years left on my second term. I've been the mayor twice, 2014 and 2017, and, you know, you try to think about what two or three things you remember most about what happened during those six years. And one, we got the UUT passed, okay? It took us three times to get it passed, okay? But we went from this city from being in the red into the black, and it's nice to be on, on an organization where you have money to get all the things you want to get done. So I thank you for the citizens and the members for, for voting for that, the UUT. The second thing was the roundtable. I started this nine years ago, okay? And it's a combination from the, from the city, the, I'm the moderator, and I don't run the meeting, I'm just the moderator, and our city manager comes, and our administrative service comes, and Jeremy's coming now, so we're really pleased that he's coming, okay? And then we have from the, from the POA, we have the general manager, Eric, thank you, and we have, Mike's been there every time, and Dale Walti's been there, so it'll be a really good turnout from, from the POA. And then we have law enforcement, the lieutenant, and, and community patrol, and we have the Water District, and the District One representative, which was former Nancy Horton, but now Daisy Burke, okay? And so, we've now added to a fireman to that. The city manager and Jeremy recommended we include a fireman, so I've talked to them, and they look like they're very positive about it, so we did that. And then the third thing was cannabis, you know, if you know what cannabis is, our marijuana, okay? And we had a decision we had to make in December of 2017, and we didn't waste any time. We made that decision in, in October, because in particular, the place where it was going to be is just right across the parking lot from the JD Dance group, okay? And they were kind of excited, having all those young children having cannabis, you know, distributed or what have you at there, so we got that done really fast. Like Jeremy mentioned, I've been, most recently is the RCTC Riverside County Transportation Commission, and basically, all decisions within Riverside get thrown through the RCTC, so it's, it's a really interesting, or a place to, to be a member of it, and then I'll, I'm also the chair, been the chair, been the chair almost every, every six years as the, of the chair of the public safety, and, you know, public safety is always number one as, as, as far as the city, and certainly important to the POA. So I think we're, we're doing in the right direction, and I appreciate everything that came today. Thank you.
Okay, we have two councilmembers that aren't present.
I've been the mayor twice, 2014 and 2017. And, you know, you try to think about what two or three things you remember most about what happened during those six years. And one, we got the UUT passed, okay? It took us three times to get it passed, okay? But we went from this city from being in the red into the black. And it's nice to be on an organization where you have money to get all the things you want to get done. So I thank you for the citizens and the members for voting for that, the UUT. The second thing was the roundtable. I started this nine years ago, okay? And it's a combination from the city, the, I'm the moderator, and I don't run the meeting, I'm just the moderator. And our city manager comes, and our administrative service comes, and Jeremy's coming now, so we're really pleased that he's coming, okay? And then we have from the POA, we have the general manager, Eric, thank you, and we have, Mike's been there every time, and Dale Wiltie's been there. So it would be a really good turnout from the POA. And then we have law enforcement, the lieutenant, and community patrol, and we have the water district and the District One representative, which was former Nancy Horton, but now Daisy Burke, okay? And so we've now added a fireman to that. The city manager and Jeremy recommended we include a fireman. So I've talked to them, and they look like they're very positive about it. So we did that. And then the third thing was cannabis, you know? If you know what cannabis is, our marijuana, okay? And we had a decision we had to make in December of 2017, and we didn't waste any time. We made that decision in October because, in particular, the place where it was going to be is just right across the parking lot from the J.D. Dance Group, okay? And they were kind of excited having all those young children having cannabis, you know, distributed or what have you at there. So we got that done really fast. Like Jeremy mentioned, I've been, most recently, is the RCTC, Riverside County Transportation Commission, and basically, all decisions within Riverside get thrown through the RCTC. So it's a really interesting place to be a member of it. And then I'm also the chair, been the chair, been the chair almost every six years as the chair of the public safety. And, you know, public safety is always number one as far as the city, and certainly important to the POA. So I think we're doing in the right direction, and I appreciate everything that came today. Thank you.
Okay, we have two councilmembers that aren't present. Mayor Pro Tem Jordan Aaron Krantz, which probably most of you in this room don't know him, he's been around a day or two here.[608.12][608.12](Laughter). He's been on, he has served, I think, three times on the POA board, plus he's been, he's in his third term. On the city council, he currently is in Europe, I think in Italy. So wish him the best, and he'll be back soon. But he represents us on the Western Regional Council of Governments, SWRCOG. That's a large government agency here in the county that provides funding, deals with lots of different issues and items that affect all types of government, including county government, city government, and also state. He also represents us on the mosquito vector, which doesn't sound like a big deal until the mosquitoes come down with West Nile, and then it's a big issue. So he watches that, and is an active member of that. He's also on the Veterans Committee as a designated co-chair. Our other newest councilmember came on last year was Casey Castillo. She currently is doing a conference for law enforcement. She is what we consider our water representative for our council. She will be our expert, I will call it, eventually. She represents us in La Juwa, which is the Lake Elsinore-San Jacinto watershed. She's also the chair of the public safety, co-chair of the Public Safety Committee, and she also sits on the Water Committee. So we've tried to specialize each of our areas, from transportation to water, and then you come to me. And I'm kind of a jack of all trades. I'm in charge of the planning and the finance committee. I'm also representing the Emergency Preparedness Group. I am an RCA Executive Board, meaning that's the Regional Conservation Authority, which is a lot of words, but they have a lot of power, they have a lot of things that they're doing in this county to protect the habitat, the species that are here, so that we don't annihilate all of them with our developments. So they're putting in corridors, and it's quite an eye-opener. Also represent the Southern California Area Government, SCAG, and the Quality AQMD, which most of us know only has bad names, but they really do a lot of good things. My job as the mayor is to be the ambassador for the city, to reach out to the other cities around us, our POA, to represent us on a regional level and on a statewide level, so that we have a voice, even though we're small, have a voice to show where we are here in Canyon Lake, who we are, how effective we can be, and how kind, and the networks that we can develop, so that there probably isn't one thing that hasn't been done in this state that we can't beg, borrow, or steal to make our community better. Our focus this year for our council is to be very proactive at all levels of government, including local, as well as what we're doing tonight. We want to have presence, we want to have a level of expertise, and we want people to talk about Canyon Lake in a way that is positive. We have reached out to all of our neighbors in the region and have fostered a very positive relationship, and I have to take my hats off to the citizens here in Canyon Lake because this is who we're representing. We're representing all of us, our board up here, besides what we're trying to do at that level. So with that, I would like to have the city manager introduce our staff. Our new city manager's been on board, this is his fourth week, it's Chris Mann. And take her over, Chris.
Well, good evening. This is my fourth full week with the city, and I'm thrilled to be here. I've received really a very warm welcome by the community, so I'd like to thank you for that, and a warm welcome from this council. I can already tell, and I want you to know, that this council that represents you is very hardworking, very hands-on, and it's a council that works well together, and that is something that is not always the case everywhere, so it's something to be thankful for. The role of the city manager is the administrative head of the city. If the city council were a board of directors, the city manager would be the appointed CEO of the city. And in a city the size of Canyon Lake, the city manager is often also the front desk clerk, sometimes the receptionist, sometimes the head janitor.[893.01][893.01](Laughter). We run pretty lean at the city, and I think it's something to be proud of, that this city is very careful with public dollars. We contract out for everything we possibly can. In addition to myself, we have only three other full-time staff members. We have three part-time special enforcement officers, one full-time code enforcement officer, and we contract out for everything else. The city attorney, police, fire, building and safety, planning, our accountants, and, you know, we're very effective and efficient in saving the taxpayers money doing that. We have two of our other staff members this evening, Mike Borha, our Administrative Services Manager, and Anna Soseda, our Deputy City Clerk. And I'm sure many of you know our code enforcement officers that you probably see out and about. They were busy working today and didn't have to join us here this evening. But I look forward to getting to know you all as I continue my service here, and thank you for having me.
That's my cue. So I'd like each board member to introduce themselves. Dale, will you start, please?
Hello, my name's Dale Wiltie. I've been director for about three years now. Before that, I was part of a number of committees. The list is long, I was chairman on a handful of them. Currently, I'm the board liaison to the FRC, the Facility Review Committee, I'm the liaison to the Dredge Committee, and I'm the liaison to the Estates Committee. So my particular committees are engaged at the city because we, the Dredge Committee is concerned with the lake. The lake responsibilities fall clearly on the city and the POA in different ways, as a shared responsibility. So they have the ability to go out and do things for the lake that the POA can't, and the POA has the ability to do some things for the lake that the city can't. So it's very important that we work together on this, the lake's health and on the dredge project, so that we can accomplish the things that need to be done. If the POA tries to take on a big lake project on their own, we're going to take about three steps and say, "You know what? We don't have the authority to do this. We don't have the authority to do that, and we don't have the authority to do a number of things." And that's why we have to go to the city, who has the authority, to take action on the lake, and they can move things ahead. Nancy talked about the Lejuah. We can't be on Lejuah, the city can be. They represent the community as a whole, which of course is some of the POA. And so if we're not talking together, and we're not working together on these things, it's going to be very difficult for us to keep this lake healthy and for the, get the lake to improve. The other thing that we work together on is security. We have two sides of security. We have the sheriff on the one side with the city, we have the community patrol on the POA side. So it's nice when they, their ability, they have the ability to talk, they can call you. When the community patrol drives up and there's something that's really dangerous going on and threatening, the community patrol can call the sheriff. And when something's going on where somebody's doing something that violates the POA rules, then the community patrol can go out. It's great to have, the more set of eyes driving around in those cars, the better, and the better they communicate with each other, the better it is for the community to be provided a great service. So we have that opportunity with the city to work on some of that now. The other thing, as Steve Liebering talked about, is the roads. We have a couple of roads in the community that we somewhat share. I am on the Estates Committee, and the Estates actually, roads actually belong to, I believe it's the city, sometimes I hear it's the county. And the Estates Committee would like to see if they could maybe have the POA take possession so they could be behind gates just like the rest of us are. And that's a long dialogue, and it's one the Estates Group wants to start, and that's something we need to work with the city on. And obviously, the roads coming in and out of the community need, if we work together on that discussion, it would be incredibly beneficial, so we can get something done to, of course, the goal is to serve all of you. So I'm really optimistic that we can, we can put these things on the map and start moving ahead with them, and, you know, feel free to hold our feet to the fire, and especially the president and the mayor, feel free to call them anytime you want (laugh) with issues. But anyway, yeah, I'm very optimistic about this. Wow, what a great crowd. I thought we were going to be, you know, maybe ten of us, but you guys will do great. So thank you.
I'm Jim Beringham, and I am the, was elected last year, so I'm just about to complete my first year on the board. It has been a very interesting venture. Things that you think are easy to fix are not quite that easy sometimes, but I've enjoyed every minute of this year. And to be able to be part of something that has never been done again, working with the city, I think is really the success that we're going to need to make Canyon Lake as a city survive, and sharing some of these costs and not overlapping. I have a lot of questions why we don't get more tax money. But I have questions, but I don't have answers. But I think working together, we should do very well together as opposed to fighting or pointing fingers at each other, because we really all share the same common problem as safety, security, and those types of things. And I personally love this community, that's the reason I ran for the board, and I'm just so happy part of this meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Nathan, I've been the board treasurer for the past couple of years. Also, before that, was in the Finance Committee, Rules Committee, Recreation Committee. When I think about this coming together of this group of people, a single word comes to mind, synergy. The sum of, or the whole is greater than the sum of the parts, and I think that that's what this group is going to be able to accomplish, that we each have been working independently, and sure, we get things done, but I really believe that working together and being one cohesive unit, we can get even more done and be all for the greater good of the community. Example, tomorrow morning, not that it was planned this way, but there's a, there's a empty hole floating out in the north area of the lake, and somebody just abandoned it, and we're going to be working together, our operations department is getting together with the city's code enforcement, going to get that hole and get it out of the water. And again, it's all for the benefit of everybody that lives here. Appreciate everybody coming to this meeting, and I hope we get to be real successful in all the future meetings.
Hi, my name is Phil Hoggood, and I'm a second-year termer, which is up for reelection, and I enjoy the opportunity to work with the Green Committee about and with the golf and the course and the individuals, the players, the pro, and everything affiliated with it. And if you don't know, we have the most pristine golf course in any area around us within sixty miles, except maybe the Indian Ranch where they have all the free money and they can build it even more without having to ask for it.[1338.25][1338.25](Laughter). Yeah, it's the money that they got from gambling.[1343.75][1343.75](Laughter). I'm also on the Appeals Committee, and that's a very difficult committee to be a liaison to, because when people come in, they're coming in for some issue that has been given them a ticket. And they're looking at the appeals group, and they're looking at me, and literally, the group has the authority of what they're going to do, and I'm just the pigeon that gets to take all the responsibility. So it's quite challenging during the night when I see everybody going one way or the other in their decision-making, but I feel like at eight months now, I'm going to live through it all right. I enjoy working with the community. I wasn't sure when I first arrived as a board chairman what my role would be, but what I found out very quickly was it wouldn't be my role, it would be a role I would produce for the city. It's not about me, it's not about any of our board members, it's about how we react for the city on the city's behalf, or the Canyon Lake Property Owners Association also. And I've been asking for two years, why aren't we more involved with the city? And I'm glad to see this meeting happening tonight, and I hope it continues, that we can merge together and have a joint power agreement and go forward successfully. Thank you.
And my name's Mike Harris. Excuse me. And first off, I want to thank the city council for providing the fire department Station 60. Last night, I had a one-round fight with my table saw, and it won.[1441.75][1441.75](Laughter). I called 911, and the Station 60 showed up immediately, very professional, just a great bunch of guys, really. I mean, put me at ease. It was dark, and they said, "We need more light." I said, "Well, hold on, I'll go get it." He said, "No, you're injured, sit down.[1466.88][1466.88](Laughter) We'll get the light." I said, "Okay." You know? They cleaned the wound, dressed it, and wrapped it up, so I could go to the hospital and have a sewing needle put through my finger. But other than that, I really, really appreciate what the city has done to provide us, you know, the safety of the fire department (sigh) and the police department. And I'm really looking forward to working with the city. I mean, we're all members of this community, so we are members of the POA, and we are also members of the city of Canyon Lake. So there's no reason why we can't get together on common ground and accomplish some really difficult tasks that are before us. And I really appreciate the opportunity for this. So for that, I want to thank everyone for showing up. It's great to have more support than just talking to ourselves, you know? And who do I turn this over to for Eric?
Like Mike said, thank you, everybody, for coming. This is a little better-than-average turnout for one of our normal meetings, and so together we can draw a little bigger crowd, which is nice. So really appreciate working with the city on putting this together. I think this is kind of a getting-started meeting, and we look forward to doing this quarterly. So my name is Eric Kazakoff, I'm the general manager of the POA. Like Chris said, there is a, it's an unusual form of government we have here. We have a five-member elected board of directors, they have one employee under contract, and that is me. And then together, the POA, the rest of the employees of the POA, about 140-plus or minus on any given day, work for the corporation. And in the outside world, like Chris said, I would be the CEO of the corporation here. I'm called the general manager of the corporation. There's four of us here, five of us here tonight, Lynn Jensen, the Assistant General Manager, and Harmony, who's our Public Information Officer and clerk of the board. Our Director of Operations isn't here, but two of his right-hand people, Cindy and Operations Manager, and Elaine. Elaine does many things, including writing our very extensive monthly report about everything that the operations department does. And there are forty or so employees, including great people like Ron Carson. So thank you, guys, for being here and everything you do. Basically, Lynn and I, as general manager and assistant general manager, we oversee 140 employees with an annual budget. This year, I think, sixteen and a half million dollars. We have over 21 budget departments, and every year, we sit down with 12 department managers and develop our annual budget. It's a, it's a pretty good-sized corporation with a lot of moving parts, and our departments are accounting, Susan Dawood, who's our very capable and likable controller and who really runs a tight ship. She came aboard about the same time I did, about three years ago. Activities, we have Kerry Pratt, Community Patrol, we have Corey Goram, and working under him is Bill Jordan, who is our contracted security manager. At the Country Club Bar and Grill, we have Chrissy Sissel. Lynn and I, in the corporate department, general manager and assistant general manager. At the golf course, we have a contracted golf pro, Pat Kemble. In human resources, Lisa Rogers. Information technology, James Trask, our IT manager, who told me our audio was a little quiet, so I turned it up. We have a new toy over here, we're trying a live streaming camera. Steve Schneider, operations, who oversees plus or minus 40 people in the very hard-working and our largest, almost, well, pretty much our largest department, operations, that they take care of 36 miles of roads and 16 parks and beaches, and anything breaks, it's, they take care of it. I terrorize them with emails, night and day, and on weekends. I am also a member of this community, and I see, when I see things, I email them, and it doesn't matter what day or what time it is, they can always tell I'm having an OCD But together, we're getting a lot of good things done, and we really work well together, and they're a very hard-working department. Member services, those are the smiling people you see at the, at the desk downstairs in the POA that interface with the members on a day-to-day basis, planning and compliance. You'll also deal with them at the counter. They're sort of the POA's building department, Cheryl Mitchell. I failed to mention I failed to mention Corey's the Manager of Member Services. And here at the Lighthouse Restaurant, we have Thomas Agnastopoulos. I think I got that right. If you haven't met Thomas, he's a great guy. He's always around here, turning things around here at the lodge. And they had a great, what'd they call it, wine and dinner package last night, Francis Ford Coppola, and I think they had a really good turnout. And our bottom lines are doing much better at the two restaurants and that's largely due to Chrissy and Thomas. And together with Christina Barton, our Banquet Manager, they make up the Food and Beverage Department, which is another 50 or so employees, plus or minus on any given day. So we have a lot of moving parts, we have a lot of employees, and we're a team here. And I think we have one of the best, tightest-knit, most bonded team that I think this association has had in a while. Like, everybody has everybody else's back and I think the Board has our back and we have the Board's back. And I can say that for all three Boards that I've worked for here. Like, it always takes us a little time to get to know each other, but after we do, we tend to work pretty well and I think we're getting things done. And it's because of these people and these five guys and we're really grateful for the city. We have a great relationship with them. And Chris is a great new addition to the city. I think we're off to a good start. It's only been four weeks, but we're working really well together and really happy that we're doing this. So I think that's all I have to say. So thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Okay, great. I think I'm going to kind of meld these next two slides together. Has been mentioned this evening that the city and the POA are very different in how we're formed. Of course, the city's a public agency and the POA is a nonprofit corporation and as such, we're governed by very different rules and regulations. The City of Canyon Lake is a general law city, which means that we operate under the laws of the state of California. We provide a number of services and functions which are listed here on the screen behind me. I won't read through them all. The City Council is the governing board. We have a five-member City Council elected at large, which means, not by district, we don't have districts here in Canyon Lake, it's nonpartisan office as well. And the City Council hires, makes two hires. The City Council hires a City Manager and a City Attorney. The City Manager and City Staff are tasked with implementing the vision and the policy direction set by the Council. And Eric, I'll let you talk about the POA side of that equation.
I got to find which page was mine. Is that it? Okay.
I think you're there.
So the POA is a private mutual benefit, not-for-profit corporation incorporated in 1968. We manage a contracted community and Marine Patrol. We also have a golf course maintenance contract, landscaping contracts, golf pro who is under We, as an association, we lease the lake's surface rights from Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District, who owns the lake. And that gives us surface rights to do recreation on the lake and make improvements within the shore zone. We own and maintain 36 miles of roads within the gates. We own and manage all the common areas within the gates and that's 16 parks and beaches. We take care of the lake. If there's weeds in the lake, we harvest those. We interface with EVMWD and on the alum treatments, we represent the common area and the interests of all 4,800 members. Our income comes from 4,800 people paying dues every month and that's about $11 million whether we do any revenue producing or not. But on top of that, we have revenue centers like the golf course and the rental docks and two restaurants, the Lighthouse Restaurant and the Country Club Restaurant. And all together with our reserve funds, it's about $16.5 million. We oversee the regulation of CCNRs. We're governed by California Civil Code and the Davis Sterling Common Interest Development Act and our Articles of Incorporation, our bylaws and our rules and regulations. And we, if you can go to the next one.
And these will be, this presentation will be posted on our website if you want to read any of this in detail. Did you touch on this one, Chris? The difference between the POA and the city?
Not yet. I think that's where we are now.
Okay. You want to do the city portion of that?
Well, we've touched on this one here.
Okay, we have.
Yeah. I think the only, the only part I left out is, I think, what a lot of people know already that our, on the city side, our council meets once a month, first Wednesday of each month at 6:30 in the City Council chambers. And then we have various city committees that meet and we have a list of those and a schedule of those meetings on our website. And I think we wanted to briefly go over just the differences between Community Patrol, Marine Patrol, and then on the city side, what police and fire do, so that people understand kind of where those divisions are. Did you want to cover that part, Eric?
Yeah, I got that. So here, under contract to us through, was US Security, now it's Allied Universal. We have another large group of employees that are under contract through this contractor. It runs around 50 people that staff our Road Patrol, Community Patrol, and Marine Patrol. Their primary functions are to provide the community with services, including access control at the entry gates, compliance with our rules and regulations, issuing citations on our private roads, and everything related to security. It's a difficult job. They, we have over 400,000 entrances through our gate on any given month here. And you think about that number, that's a very large number. And we get a lot of comments about the guard, the guard was doing this or the guard wasn't doing that. And if you, if you think about the number of cars that pass through there, it's a difficult job and it's not a high-paying job in the security business. And those people take a lot of abuse and there's a lot of turnover there. So keep that in mind if you, if you're about to complain because the volume of cars they deal with and trying to keep a smile on their face on any given day is, it's pretty unbelievable. But they, they're our private security force. The, they work for us, the police contracts, the city contracts with Riverside County Sheriff's Department to provide law enforcement for the city. They do not issue citations on our private roads. They're basically here to DUI, arrest, thefts, and follow-up on a normal law, public agency type of law enforcement. And then the fires, fire, we own the fire station, the POA owns the fire station, we lease that to the city for a dollar.
And we paid, and we paid, we're up, we're current, aren't we?
We, we never bill them, so they owe us about five bucks. But I, yes, I know where they live, so I'm really not worried about it. And the city contracts with CAL FIRE to provide fire protection. And I believe the city also owns the fire engine inside the fire station. And so together, we provide security and protection. We take care of the private side and they take care of the public side and it works pretty well here.
Just like to comment, if you, if you need to know one thing about the division between the city and the POA, in emergencies, in thefts, in assaults, in reckless driving, in drunk driving, anytime you feel threatened, you don't, you dial 911. All right? So if you're, if you're stressed out, thinking about who to call, and it's an emergency situation, please dial 911 because after that, you can call the city and talk and you can figure everything else out with a phone call. But the 911 is the most important thing you walk away with tonight.
I think the last point here is that the city and the POA both have processes for building permits. So I think sometimes applicants get a little confused. They've gone to the POA and gotten approvals and they think they're done and they forgot to go to the city or vice versa. So approvals for, you know, architecture, landscaping, those sorts of things, for building permits, make sure that you get approvals both places.
Yeah, basically, the preferred process here is if you're a member here and you have an improvement to your property, you come to the POA first and you pull a permit, even if you're just painting, you come and get a permit over the counter. Doesn't cost anything. You provide some information. Certain items go to the Architectural Control Committee that meets once a week. And once you have approval from the POA, then you go next door to the City Building Department and pull a normal building permit. And we, the two entities require different things, but the city does usually, does require that you show proof that the POA has approved the form and function. That's kind of what we do. And they do structural and building inspection. We have inspectors, but our inspectors approve things like, is it the right color? Is it what you told us you were going to build? Is it, is it done? And the city's contracts with the Building Inspection Department and they have certified building inspectors and engineers and plan checkers and a certified building official and all of those things. And so you need both to do, make improvements here.
I'm sorry, we, I've got to, Jack, I've got to step in here real quick, I'm sorry. We don't have attorneys here with us this evening, but another difference between the city and the POA is that we are bound by the Brown Act. And we have to be pretty strict on, on the meeting and back and forth and really only go into discussion on things that are agendized. And so since we've passed the public comment portion, the City Council, the rules we're under don't really allow a back and forth beyond that, that public comment portion.
And that's the reason I addressed the POA.
Well, clever.
I remember comment period is over as well.
It was just in reference to if you dial 911, don't hang up because they've got you on a GPS. If you happen to be in the park and so on, don't hang up that phone. That was it.
You look pretty handsome without a hat, Jack. I just want to let you know. I don't think, I don't think I've ever seen you without a hat.
Mr. Mayor, I think we're on the future projects portion of the agenda.
Yeah, I see that and I see that you and Eric are the presenters on that. Identification of future projects?
Yeah, we, we thought we might open this up to the council. Eric and I kind of brainstormed on a couple of ideas and, I don't know, Eric, do you want to maybe start the discussion and then kind of see where it goes? The one thing I would again ask is that as we bring up topics that could be projects that we work on, if we keep the discussion to just kind of identification of topics, since none of those topics will be specifically identified on the agenda, we're not able to go into discussion on any one topic in depth.
So yeah, my, my two cents for future projects is, this was kind of an introductory meeting for us. We have several ongoing discussions related to public safety. We have an ongoing, we have an upcoming meeting in April. It's a joint meeting with EVMWD. The tail end of our, the lake lease litigation is shore zone survey. And moving forward, we have a meeting in a couple of weeks with the Building Department and Chris and staff and our staff and Planning and Compliance Department and EVMWD about what our, what our procedures are going to be for submitting, say, a seawall or a dock or a gazebo or anything within that shore zone's boundary. There's a lot of property here that the EVMWD property will run right through someone's beach because the, the lake level goes up and down. And so that, that, that visible shore zone boundary moves. But, so we're kind of at the tail end of that and we're getting, going to get together and establish what we're doing moving forward. And so that's kind of next on our, our group agenda. And we have ongoing conversations. We have, if we have an issue, I know I can walk right next door to Chris and, and sit down and talk to him and he knows the same. And so we have a very open dialogue now. And we talked earlier about this agenda item and I think maybe we'll just throw it to the council and the board and see if there's any topics that, that the board members or the council members are interested in discussing on our next agenda. We don't have specific items on this agenda. This is just kind of a starter meeting. But we can open that up for a few minutes and see if anybody has any ideas for maybe our next agenda.
Yeah, I think, you know, obviously, water and safety has been the two items discussed the most here tonight. I think those are two of the biggest items as well. But for me, I think, you know, obviously, we've got a lot of work to do in regards to our public safety issues. You know, at the next meeting, if it would be possible, I think that would be something that, you know, we could discuss and how we can work together between the two boards and possibly look at ways, whether it's a private entity coming together with a public entity with regards to funding, or just looking at the services that we have and seeing if we can't come together. Because I do think that a lot of what we're doing is servicing the same cause and need and I think that's an important topic that we should be discussing. So that's, that's my thing. I think water is an important one too, but I think it would go on for hours if we tried to take both those items at once. So for me, it would be a recommendation to look at public safety for the next quarterly meeting.
I think that would probably fill up an agenda, just being that one particular thing, breaking it down and the different components of it. I think that would be a good topic. Also, I think, going back to the other one, water, because of the things that are currently going on with the Santa Ana River Regional Water Body, I see Darcy's in the back, we've got a great water rep. And so there are things going on currently that probably be the interest to the community if it was a point that we could talk about them. So I think we need to look at our lake as a, as a, it's a regional water asset. We look at it as a local, but if we look at it on the big stage of things, we're part of the drainage that runs into the, eventually back into the ocean. And there's a lot of people that are affected by this drainage. So I think if we look at our lake in a, in a way that looks at it from a large regional aspect, because there's a lot of people that have input into it, both a positive and a negative. So that's about all I've got to say on that.
My comment on the lake, because we do have a dredge committee and is there anything that precludes you, your, some representatives from your side coming to our dredge meeting and engaging in that, you know, subcommittee we have?
I think they, I think they already do. I believe that Casey has already been to one.
She has been, it was great, yeah.
And I believe she's planning to attend when we're notified. She plans to attend those to represent the city. I do know that the Director of Elijah was going to be there too. So I think the players that, that we need at the meetings are the ones that have access to other things. And so when I say other things, other agencies, other water projects, it's much bigger than Canyon Lake.
And I, Darcy's attended our last one, that was great too. So thank you for attending. So just want to, we're, of course, coming, dealing with the soppy issue and, and that should be moving ahead pretty quickly. Once that's resolved, we can, we can start another discussion. The other thing we're doing is, in brief, is we're doing some, we're looking for some testing so we can bring all that together to the table and we'll, we'll make a point to invite you guys.
Okay. I guess that we're at the next discussion of the future joint meetings. I think we talked on a quarterly basis, is that what, yeah. And I think that's a good start. Gives us time to develop items and things like that.
Get a better agenda together, so, you know, we're not practicing as we're speaking.
So, do you want to calendar it now, or do you wait until we get staff back together and then set the date?
If I may, we're tentatively looking at June 24th, it's a Monday, due to availability of staff in this room.
Okay.
But we'll work with council and the board on finalizing that date and making sure we publish it.
Okay. June 24th. Okay. All right, sounds good. All right. The next part is, we have three minutes for each council member, three minutes, that you can have closing comments if you so desire. Councilman Foner.
Well, I was going to tell you, the reason I looked a little different than the rest of people, because I had my tie and shirt on like a city council member, okay? But I was past president of the POA, so I put the shirt on that I had got when I was president of the POA. So, I looked both sides when I came to the meeting. I just want to make one comment. Ruben has been working really hard to get a public safety meeting in the evening, okay? And I think the last I heard, you had like 55 people or something?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight? Okay. So, that's, we're going to try that again. This will be the fourth time we've tried it, by the way. And one time it worked, and the other three, it reverted to two or four people being there. So, we're going to try it one more time. And please support Ruben and his efforts. He's put a lot of work into this. And we can, it's the first, in May, it's the first Wednesday, Tuesday, first Tuesday in the month of May. Okay? Thank you.
Well, I think Chris mentioned May 28th.
Yes, Councilman, I think we're looking at Wednesday, May the 22nd.
Oh, the 22nd?
Yeah.
Who said that?
He did. Yeah, he's got it set for the 22nd. So, it will be well-publicized. We'll get it out on the bulletin boards and let everyone know in the community when it be done, because there, obviously, the Public Safety Committee has a lot of information that's valuable. It's different than the security. So, it's focused around things that are done in law enforcement, fire and that. But hopefully, we can get that pulled off for you, Ruben. Jeremy?
You know, a huge shout-out to the staff, both on the POA side and the city side. Can we give them a round of applause, please, if you don't mind? You know, when the council or, you know, the POA have an idea, it's the staff that comes together and really implements that. And I got to hand it to them. This is something that's never been done before, and I think they pulled it off. The idea tonight was to really show the difference between what is city council and what is your POA. And I think we tried to do that. I hope we did that. I think that was very important, and that was the process. I do believe this meeting is going to be important down the road with some big decisions that we're going to have to make to be able to survive as a city. And I think that's going to be extremely important to have both bodies on the same page. Tonight, you know, we had some good discussion brought up by Jack and Nancy and Stephen. Thank you guys for coming forth with some of these big issues. We've got a lot on our table right now that we need to resolve. But I think having, you know, subcommittees in regards to, you know, the gates and how that's being used is important, so we can see where the funds are being used and how possibly we can offset that with some of the stuff that we're doing as well. Nancy, it's crucial that we look at water. We have to. That's got to be, you know, one of the biggest issues that we as a city stand on, because it's everything to us. I mean, that is so crucial. So, some of these items that have come forth tonight, I think is important. And I do believe this conversation will continue down the road, and more people will come out and hopefully share what their concerns and issues are with both the city and the POA. But I'm just extremely humbled to be here tonight, folks, and thank you for showing up and participating and supporting this meeting. It means a lot to me. And I'm looking forward to hopefully getting some good nuggets out of this. Thank you.
I hope they're gold nuggets. Anyway, I believe that, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. It's very encouraging when we see faces in the audience, because a lot of times our meetings, we don't have too many people that actually stay for the entire meeting. I believe we hit our target on this meeting. Was several meetings that we had, putting this agenda, formulating what we would talk about. And so, I think we've really hit our target with that. I hope you like this format. Hopefully, our next one will have a little more substance, meaning there will be specific things that we can talk about. But as was pointed out, we have a certain set of rules that we're guided by, so we have to make sure we adhere to those. But again, I want to commend the board, the POA board, the council, and all of our citizens. It's a great community, and I'm very proud to serve as your mayor. Thank you.
Dale, would you like to start us off? And we'll work this way. Tom, three minutes.
I'd say it's, I'll give my time to Tom here. No, it's great to have everyone here. It's amazing that the city and the POA will, I think we're going to be very good at working together as a team to provide the members and the citizens everything we possibly can. We have such a rare community, because literally, every citizen in here is either a member or a renter here. So, we're all the same people we're serving. There's maybe 30 people that are not in that group. So, we are basically two parts of one body that's trying to serve our people and our citizens the best we can. And we're going to work ahead on this. Thank you.
I'm going to give Tom a little more time here to talk. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Looking forward to working with the city, and also all of you that are watching us on TV. Tom, you have plenty of time now.
All right. Thank you for your time. But I really don't need the time. A lot of the sentiments have been expressed. Really appreciate everybody showing up. You know, we're all volunteers here. You also volunteer your time by not going to your dinners or being with your families, and we appreciate you being here. Great to see with not much on the agenda, this many people here. Hopefully, as we start putting things that are really with merit on the agenda, that we'll even see more people here. But thank you again for coming tonight, and look forward to seeing people in a few months.
That's a record. Thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. Appreciate your support for what we hope to have a long future with the city and a joint power agreement can be completed.
I want to reiterate that what Jack had said, call 911. I relied on the city last night. I can testify that they do respond, okay? Because there is a definite separation. A lot of people get confused, what does a city do? What does a POA do? Health and safety, call 911 for police or fire. Exactly. Don't hang up. And that's one of the things they told me last night, don't hang up. But I'm glad that everyone, you know, we got a good crowd here tonight. And, you know, it wasn't a booming crowd, because nothing controversial. We know how to bring them in when, when there's controversy. But I appreciate everyone showing up tonight. I am looking forward to working with the city. I mean, we're all in the same community. There's no reason why we don't. And I hope that, you know, as board changes and city council changes, that this stays a permanent part of the city and the POA. And thank you all for coming.
All right, yeah, I have to make a motion to adjourn. The meeting is adjourned at 7:19 or 1919 hours.
Make a motion that we adjourn the POA meeting at 1919.
Second.